A half score of words a couple of weeks ago, but let me at least give you one more. I want you to remember that you're here to serve us. Don't forget that. Whether that be to crawl into a burning building you've never been in before, or to rescue someone from peril, or to provide advanced medical care and treatment of those who are ill, or simply just to provide comfort and hold somebody's hand. You must always remember that you are here not for yourself and your own ambitions, but you're here for others. The oath you will be taking after receiving your badge is not just a few meaningless words or a department ritual. It's not a procedural checkbox. The words in this oath should not be taken lightly. They are your promise and your commitment to integrity, honor, service, and trust. So when you raise your right hand in front of your family, friends, coworkers, and the community that puts its trust in you, please do not let them down, okay? So, so all of you know, the oath that we'll be giving is very, very brief, but for the sake of brevity. However, before they came here, we gave them a much longer oath, much better description of what we expect from them and what we need from them as a fire department and as a community. So firefighter Bridget Martin, who would you like to pin you?
Hannah Jacoby.
All right, come on up. There you go, Mayor. All right, welcome. Fire, or Lawrence Elise?
I'd like to invite my family, my kids up, LJ, Ella, and Kalia. Come up, please.
I mentioned to the mayor, Lawrence used to work for the fire department. Life took him on different adventures, and we like to say that he finally made his way back home to us. So we're blessed to have Lawrence back with us. Nice. Lindsay Lowen, who would you like to pin you?
My husband, Matt.
Matt, nice to meet you. Thank you for allowing your wife to serve the city, all right?
Okay, Austin McDowell?
I will have my wife, Samantha.
Hi, thank you for allowing your husband to serve the city, all right?
Jared McMuren, who is going to pin you?
My little actually, my girlfriend.
Thank you for allowing him to serve.
Makaiya Sod, who is going to be pinning you?
My father, Thorn Sod.
Sir, thank you for your son's support, supporting your son's service.
Okay, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Lawrence Elise.
From this day forward.
From this day forward.
To openly pledge and freely declare.
To openly pledge and freely declare.
That I will faithfully serve and fulfill my duties.
That I will faithfully serve and fulfill my duties.
As a professional first responder of the Albany Fire Department.
As a professional first responder of the Albany Fire Department.
Citizens of Albany.
The citizens of Albany.
The surrounding communities.
Surrounding communities.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, so, family, friends, you're more than welcome to stay for the entire council meeting. I'm sure everybody would love to have you, but if you want to leave, now would be a very good time for us to go out into the lobby, take some pictures, and... But again, you can stay if you want. Okay, thank you.
We'll give them time to vacate and take pictures, then we'll reset, rezone. Yeah, but they'd be sitting here for... That's true. Councillor Copsis, can you hear me? Can you, can you say something?
Yes, I can.
Perfect.
It's going in and out, but ninety percent of the time.
Thank you. So before I call the next speakers up, I want people to know why I've asked nonprofits to come and speak to us. I realized during the pandemic that a lot of folks reached out to me as the mayor and also as their insurance agent, what nonprofits, what, what do people need in this community? And the idea came to me after one of my clients said, I don't know who to donate money to. She just moved here from Spokane. Then I started the list and worked with Mary Dibble to reach, have nonprofits reach out to her and get on the agenda. And quite a few of them have said it's been a success for them as an organization. They've been able to help more people, so I'd like to continue that condition, tradition, I would like to start tradition, of having nonprofits join us and share what they need from us, what service they provide to our community, how we can help them, whether it's volunteers or money or clothes or resources. So that's why nonprofits come and speak to us at least once a month at our city council meeting. So next on tonight's agenda is Lynn Together. Would you please join us at the podium?
Well, thank you for inviting us to be here tonight. My name is Danette Killinger, and presenting with me tonight is Dar Merrill, and we are part of the Lynn Together Community Coalition. And just for curiosity, how many of you have heard of Lynn Together? Maybe seen something from Lynn Together in the community? Okay, awesome. Well, Lynn Together is a community coalition, and our focus is to reduce youth substance use and help youth make positive, healthy decisions. Our primary focus areas are underage drinking, underage marijuana use, nicotine vaping, and most recently, we have developed a task force to look at fentanyl prevention and awareness. We do what we do by partnering with local youth-serving organizations, schools, and parents, equipping them with information and tools that help them help youth make positive youth choices. So I want to share a little bit, or I want to share a lot and a little bit about how we do what we do what we do. And so I'm just going to share, Dar and I are going to talk about some of the strategies and some of the resources that we provide the community, not only Albany, but we are a countywide coalition. We do community education and training. We try to annually bring in a national speaker to address our community on an emerging issue. In the past, we've brought in people who've talked about vaping, who've talked about opioids. Most recently, we partnered with Samaritan to bring in Jermaine Galloway, who is a national presenter, expert on youth marijuana use. In addition to bringing in national presenters, we also provide some very specific training to our community. As you can see here, the responsible sales training. Responsible sales training is a training that we make available to our local retailers who provide or sell any type of age-restricted products, such as alcohol, tobacco, lottery tickets. To do this training, we partner with OLCC, and we provide training to clerks that helps them make legal sales when they're, when they're selling, legal sales around age-restricted products. We also send some of our members to trainings. This last summer, we were able to send a couple of our members to the National Prevention Network. This allows us to connect and network nationally, hear what's going on across our nation, hear about emerging trends, and also hear about what other communities are doing so that we can bring back to Albany, to Lynn County, what makes sense for our community. The summer before, summer twenty twenty, summer twenty-two, we were able to send a youth team to the National Leadership Institute, and those students were able to attend this training during the summer and then come back and take on a leadership role in our youth counterpart the following year. This is something that we hope to continue to do. And then we have some very specific education. Just recently, this week, we were out working with our local 7-Elevens in Albany, and this is a point-of-purchase education. This is one of our campaigns. We call it bottle tagging, and it's literally bottle tagging. As you can see here, we tag alcohol that's in our local stores, and it's a point-of-purchase reminder. When people who are purchasing alcohol purchase it, they get that reminder that, you know, if you're not old enough to buy it, don't provide it to them. Also a reminder about how to store your alcohol so that it's not easily accessible to youth. In addition to our community education, we provide information through media campaigns. We currently have a youth marijuana prevention campaign. This is a partnership with Lynn County Sheriff's Office, Lynn County Juvenile Department, and Lynn County Alcohol and Drug. I hope you've seen one of our billboards in the community. You can see the one there on Queen and Pacific. This campaign rolled out this summer. We took it heavily to the Lynn County Fair this year, and this is a campaign targeting middle school youth and their parents. There's two counterparts. We have billboards, and as you can see, we've got some RAC cards that are really designed for, for parents, giving them information so that they can talk to their youth in an informed way and help their youth make informed decisions, safe decisions, and healthy decisions about substance use. The youth counterpart is, we have posters, and, and you have packets, I believe they've been passed out, yeah? You can see copies of the posters that are in the schools, and then our youth council, our high school youth council goes into middle schools, and we do some peer-to-peer education where they provide some promotional incentives along with some information to middle schoolers. We try to make most of our materials available in both English and Spanish, and you can see here the RAC card that's available in both. In addition to our youth marijuana prevention campaign, we have launched some information around fentanyl awareness. And again, we have a task force that's really just beginning to look at how, from a prevention perspective, we can support the community in what's going on. These are some conversation cards, and you should have a copy of those in your packet as well. We've distributed close to 5,000 of those in the last couple of months, primarily to teachers and parents who've requested them, and these are designed to provide people with some factual information so that they can have conversations with youth about the risks related to fentanyl, fentanyl use. Coming in April, we'll have some billboards that will complement this initial phase of this campaign that will be going up in our community as well. I mentioned our youth council earlier. Here's just a glimpse of our STAND Youth Council. STAND stands for Students Taking Action. And here's just a couple of our students who, you can see them, they're out in one of our local middle schools. They typically will go before school starts or during a lunch hour and do some peer-to-peer, just interface, hand out some promotional items with some information, again, being a peer example of someone who's choosing to make healthy choices and not use substance use. We do a lot of community events. Dar is going to share a little bit now about some of the outreach we do in our community and then how you can be involved.
I don't know why they put my picture there, but we, we try to set up a booth where we can pass out information to folks as they come into these, to these events. We do the Lynn County Fair, and I think we did the Lamb and Roll Fair, and any place where there's a congregation of a lot of people, we try to get a booth there and, and talk with the families about some of the things that we can do. We have to pass out information and usually some fun things for the kids to do to, to get their interest. So that's one of the things that, that we try to do is get to, get out into the community at the places where there's a lot of people that's coming by, so we can get the information.
Yeah, you can see at these pictures, we were at Hoop Jam this summer. We were at the Albany Business Extrav, Albany Chamber Business Extravaganza, and there we are at the Lynn County Fair.
You asked before how you can get involved. We do have a, an email group that we pass out information all the time. If you would like to get on that, we can provide you with the information of how to sign up so we can... We send out information all the time to parents, and we've, I don't know, how many do we have now? We've got quite a few folks that's, that's on that throughout the county, and it's been a good way of getting out information, especially as things are changing so quickly and, and the threats are becoming different. And so it's, it's nice to get this stuff, this information out. If, you know, we appreciate the opportunity of coming here and, and explaining, you know, what we do and why we do it. If there's anybody in the audience or the online that has some kind of an event that they would like us to come to, let us know, and we'll be more than happy to, to send a couple of people out to, to provide that information. You could come to our Lynn Together meetings. That's a, we also have it on Zoom. Just let us know. We can get you the information there. The, you could also help co-host a training. We mentioned some, some other trainings, some of these national trainings that we have. If you'd like to co-host one of those, that would be wonderful as well. We're really involved in the youth marijuana prevention campaign, and if you want some materials on that, that you want to put in your workplace where it's appropriate, again, we'll be more than happy to provide that.
Thank you. Would you mind if the council had any questions? They can address those now. Counselors, any questions at all?
How do youth get involved? You have the STAND council. How do you get them in? Are those students that just sign up or show interest, or people who have been through what you're, how do they sign up?
So we try to find a core group of students from each of our eight high schools in Lynn County, and what they do is typically we try to find a group of about five to six students, and it's any student. We prefer that it's not just leadership kids. We want kids that represent the entire student body, and they meet monthly. They meet at rotating high schools, so the same kids aren't always driving. You don't have kids from the middle city driving into Albany, so we rotate our meetings. They meet monthly and plan what they're going to do, and then they... Sometimes their meetings are planning, sometimes their meetings are action. You know, they're out in the community doing stuff. We have an application process that we send out to the schools beginning of the year to recruit kids.
Thank you.
I, well, first and foremost, thank you so much for coming, and I appreciate you reaching out and getting ahold of Mary and getting set up. I think that, you know, I spend a lot of time with kids at the high schools and middle schools and elementary schools, so this is a great resource for the community, and I would like some more of your material so I can handle that when I go meet with teachers at different schools, so... And in January, we're starting the If I Were Mayor contest again, so I'll be in every school, and I'll be able to pass it out to the teachers. So make sure your contact information's on that document, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Great. Just want to invite you all to our volunteer celebration coming January seventeenth.
Fantastic. Can you get that date, go ahead, please?
I just wanted to say hello to Dar. It's been a long time since I've seen you.
Nice to see you again.
Okay, so yeah, make sure you send it to me or send it to the city clerk, and we'll make sure we get it out, okay?
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next special presentation is Amy Hammerstrom from Alzheimer's Association, and Megan Pap, Papowski?
Actually not going to be able to make it tonight, so it's just me.
Thank you. While she's preparing, Alzheimer's is a disease that is rampant in this, in the country, and I've lost family members to Alzheimer's, my mother-in-law, uncles, aunts, and so when Amy and I met at a group called Senior Service Network up in Salem, I invited her to meet with me, and we talked about what my experiences were with Alzheimer's, and she kind of shared some things that they knew longest day and some of the events around Alzheimer's, and so I invited her to speak with us tonight, and I'm glad she got on the agenda before the year is out, because it's been, what, since May or something like that? Yeah.
Sorry, I'm having trouble figuring out now that I'm in a shared mode how to start my...
You're sharing, do you go to...
Find my thing.
Kendzie's coming.
Oh, I found it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm very excited to be able to come present to all of you. I'm Amy Hammerstrom. I am with the Alzheimer's Association, and I am your local walk manager for the Mid-Wilamette Valley Walk to End Alzheimer's event, and I also manage the longest day. So across our nation, over 6 million people are living with Alzheimer's, and over 11 million people are unpaid caregivers. So the numbers are staggering, and can I just see a show of hands, how many people in the room know someone who's been affected by Alzheimer's? Yeah, so a lot of us have been affected. So dementia and Alzheimer's, I'm going to start just by going over these terms to make sure we know the difference. Dementia is an umbrella term, and it is referring to a number of different types of dementia. Alzheimer's is the number one diagnosed form of dementia, over 60 to 80, sorry, between 60 and 80% of people diagnosed with dementia are diagnosed with Alzheimer's. And I talked about the number of people who have Alzheimer's in our nation, and it's expected that number could double by 2050. So the Alzheimer's Association is a national organization working on Alzheimer's research and care and support, and here in the state of Oregon, we, we are working in 37 counties and our, I'm sorry, our chapter is the Oregon and Southwest Washington chapter. So we're in 37 counties in Oregon, and we're in two counties in Washington. And the Alzheimer's Association was founded in 1980, and it was founded by a group of family caregivers, and Jerome Stone, whose picture is here on the screen, he is the founder of the Alzheimer's Association because his wife Evelyn was diagnosed with Alzheimer's in 1970, and there just were not supports in the community to researching and supporting this disease at that time. So our mission as the Alzheimer's Association is to lead the way to end Alzheimer's and all other dementia, and we do this by accelerating global research and risk reduction, early detection, and then maximizing quality of care and support. So we have an equal emphasis on research and care and support. We are the number one voluntary health organization in the world researching Alzheimer's, and you can see in our logo, this image shows that our, our logo has one side that is for the brain, because we are working on that care and support for the person, and then we also have the other side, and that's a science beaker, because we have that emphasis on research as well, and we truly do have an equal emphasis on both of these. So we are working on making change in a few different ways. We are working on the care and support in our community. We have a 24/7 helpline, and this is a free helpline. It is truly available 24/7. 2:00 AM on Christmas morning, you can call this line, and a master's level clinician will answer, and they can help with local referrals to agencies if you're looking for support. They can answer questions, so I love to let people know about this, because if you know someone and maybe you have some questions or some concerns, this is a great place to reach out to, to find about other resources that are available to you. We also have a lot of free online and live education classes, and we do in-person and virtual support groups. So the education classes are led by volunteers, and we have a number of different classes. There are some that are geared towards people who are diagnosed and in the early stages of Alzheimer's. We also have classes that are geared towards caregivers to help make sure they have the resources they need as their loved one progresses through the stages, and then we also have classes that are aimed at the public in general, things that everybody should know about Alzheimer's and dementia. And those free resources, again, that 24/7 helpline, but on our website, that's ALZ.org, we also have a lot of other free resources and information to help anyone who is looking for a little bit more information about Alzheimer's and dementia. We do have an emphasis also on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We want to make sure that all of the communities are getting the support and care that they need, because Alzheimer's and dementia does affect all communities. And then, of course, increasing concern and awareness. For the number of people who are affected by Alzheimer's and dementia, it's not talked about often enough in our community, so that's where, again, we have those educational workshops that we do, the classes, and I tell everybody I ever meet about that helpline, because I think everyone should know about it. So we're always working to make sure that everybody knows where they can go and get help. I can't tell you the number of times I've heard a story from someone who tells me they had a loved one with Alzheimer's, and they progressed so far through the disease before they learned about the Alzheimer's Association and what we offer and what we could do to support. So I wish that everybody knew about it earlier. And we're also working in public policy. Every Alzheimer's Association chapter has an advocacy team, and they are working to make change on that public policy level. Little bit more about the public policy and the funding that we're doing. So as I said, we are the number one voluntary health organization researching Alzheimer's and dementia in the world. Right now, we are funding over 1,000 projects in 54 countries, so we are doing international research as well. We are funding the best projects going on across the globe, and this year, we have reached a milestone. We have invested over $100 million just this year in research projects. And some of those are happening locally, so OHSU and the University of Oregon, these are places that are doing that research. We are funding research there. Okay, and so I've told you about, you know, we are the number one organization researching Alzheimer's, and we are making some progress. So in 2021, we had the first treatment that was, that was targeting the amyloid plaque, and in 2023, we've now had our second FDA-approved treatment targeting the amyloid plaque. And so previously, before this, we had drugs and treatments that were really targeting the symptoms of dementia, but now we actually have treatments that are slowing the progress of the disease. And there is a third drug coming down the pipeline that is in the process of getting that FDA approval. So of all that research, I always like to also let people know on our website, again, ALZ.org, we have a research tab, and we are always keeping this updated with the latest research that's coming out about the risk factors and different things that can be connected to Alzheimer's and dementia. So what can we all do to get involved? Walk to End Alzheimer's. So as I said, I'm your local Walk to End Alzheimer's walk manager here in the Mid-Wilamette Valley, and we have a walk, and it takes place in the fall. This past year, in 2023, we had a wonderful walk. We had about 250 people come out, and we've raised over $30,000, and we are getting ready for our 2024 walk season. So information about that walk date will be coming out, and there's no fee to register to come walk with us, so you can sign up a walk team and bring all your friends and family, and we talk about walk as our largest support group. It's an awareness-raising event. We would love to see as many people as we can put on purple and come out and walk with us on that day and show solidarity for everyone who is going through this. And I also manage the longest day, and this is a very unique fundraising event. The longest day is centered around the summer solstice, so the day with the most light is the day we fight, and anything you enjoy doing can be a fundraiser. Across our chapter, we have people having pickleball tournaments and movie nights and karaoke parties. Anything that you enjoy doing can be a fundraiser, supporting that Alzheimer's care and research. So there are a lot of ways to get involved. You can register a team and a fundraiser for the Walk to End Alzheimer's event or the longest day. We have committees that are helping support both of these events, and there are also volunteer opportunities. So our vision is a world without Alzheimer's in all of the dimension. We do believe we will find the cure, and if there's one thing that I could ask for support on tonight, it is our walk committee. We have ambitious goals coming up for 2024, and I would love to see this event continue to grow and become a, a large community event here. So if you would be interested in learning a little more about the committee or talking to me about what these roles entail and who we might know that you could help me connect with, I would hugely appreciate that, and if it's okay for me to leave some of my cards on the table?
Yes. So council, do you have any questions for Amy? Pretty thorough. I think, did yours perk up when she said pickleball?
Sure they did. Yeah. Yeah. Pickleball.
She's our resident pickleballer. So I want to say thank you very much. You know, the people I work with are experiencing this at some level with either a family member or a spouse, or a sister or a brother, and so I do appreciate this, and I do have your stuff in my office, and I do pass it out when my clients come in and ask questions about where to donate or support, so.
Thank you so much for that.
And thank you for coming this evening, and I really do appreciate you. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public, and Ray Hiltz has signed up to speak to us this evening. Three minutes, please.
I am back again. Last month, I talked to you. This, since then, I've talked to quite a few people, but primarily 10, and that had to do with the streets, the potholes, and how do we pay for it? And I had asked the question, to pay for gas tax. Three people said, that's all right. I said, utility tax, and some of them said, well, I don't know. And then I said, there's another alternative, and that is to assess every person that lives on that street, certain amount, and the amount hasn't been decided, as you know. So anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Marilyn and I had a conversation, and I think the best way that you can find out is a survey. What would you support? There was one person that said, I wouldn't support any of it. So anyway, at least if...
Did that surprise you?
No, it didn't really surprise me. But anyway, thank you for allowing me to express myself, and I don't envy you at all.
Thank you, Ray.
Because the gas tax failed before, and so, anyway, you've got big decisions to make, and I hope the citizens will speak up and let you know how they feel, and then vote properly.
I do like the survey idea, though. Thank you so much, Ray. Would anyone that did not sign up that's in chambers like to speak to the council at this time? Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda is approval of agreements. Item A, sole source procurement for expanded operation of the photo enforcement program, Chief Marsha Harden. Pages five, page five of your packet.
Good evening, mayor and council. In front of you is a request to authorize me to enter a sole source agreement or negotiations with what we have known as RedFlex since 2007, which is, we've had a contract with them for a red light camera at Queen and Gary. It's photo forced, so it's automated. The time is now to look at expanding that project in the city. By far, one of the biggest complaints we get, especially around schools, is the speed, and through automation, that'll allow us to bring about some traffic safety and some enforcement in areas where I don't have the human staff to put at those locations every day. So I'm happy to answer any questions. The memo is fairly clear on what we're asking. It has a significant impact if we do not go sole source financially to the city. It will impact our IT, courts, and the public works if we have to, to go and scrap what we have now and start again. So I'm happy to answer any questions from the council on this.
Council, any questions for the chief? Councilor Karpinski, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. We'll go, have you go first, and then Councilor Montague.
Okay, chief, in the timeframe, we've got the single camera, the double camera setup down, down there on Queen, how many false pictures have been, I guess is the right way to put it, how many false reactions to, to the camera, and has there been any actual monetary charges made to the people that actually do get properly tagged?
It's a two-part question. I'm not sure I can answer the first part. There, there's some algorithms that the company uses to eliminate false positives, either a bad license plate read or that the violator may not have committed the violation. For those who don't know anything about photo enforcement, it still has to have a human review before it's actually issued a citation, so RedFlex will send us a video along with the license plate information. A human will review that and then either approve or reject based on a unauthorized person's review. If it's approved, then it goes off to our municipal court. If the officer or reviewer does not believe the violation occurred, then they, they cancel it out, and it never goes to the offender. So we could pull those stats. I don't have them in front of me, but we have an idea. The, also, the remedy is that if a person feels that they were falsely identified by the camera, or they can say they weren't driving that particular vehicle, they have the option of filling out an affidavit under perjury to say I was not the driver there, and we estimate that about 70%, and that's conservative, 70% of the tickets are actually legitimate violations, and they just go ahead and pay.
Help me out here. If we add more cameras, will that require more manpower supposedly to actually review, review the results that come back?
Absolutely. We do anticipate that the court will add a FTE position to handle the additional citations that come in. Right now, we're doing about 700 citations a year at Queen and Gary. The conservative estimate is 15,000 to 17,000 tickets if we install all these cameras. Again, there has to be human element to that. If we wrote that same amount of tickets with a human... If we wrote that same amount of tickets with a human officer, we'd have to add 20 more officers. Each department will have to add a little bit of staff. All of those costs will be covered by revenue generated by the cameras.
Thank you.
Counselor Monogue.
First, a comment. I'm glad that we are adding more cameras because I think that anytime we can remove that police-public interaction when it comes to this kind of enforcement, I think it increases safety for everybody. But my question is, did you involve the Transportation Advisory Commission and/or the Public Safety Commission when you chose the sites, the new intersections for these?
The Traffic Safety Commission, no. I did brief the Public Safety Commission on it. These sites were identified. Well, first of all, Oregon state law requires that these cameras be attached to a signalized intersection. And so that really wiped out a lot of our school zones. And then so we really focused on some of our main areas and actually put our license plate reader speed trailer at these locations to draw data. And just anecdotally, when we put it at North Albany Road and Thornton Lake Road, we got somebody at 134 miles an hour coming down the hill. So we did our homework in that respect. So we're confident in the locations, but we did not get the input from those two commissions.
But you did brief the public safety?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Couple of things. Long time ago, when the cameras were first set up at Queen and Gary, that was not the first choice of the police department for that enforcement. But it was the place that it could be established more quickly because the bad intersections for red light running were on state highways.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out. People have been, the folks who like to comment online have made a number of suggestions for better locations. And so I just wanted to point that out. We have to use what we have to use. And all of these are city-controlled intersections. Is that right? There are traffic signals and we're not involving any state highways.
Correct. Any installation of a camera has to go through an ODOT review and approval process, which could greatly slow and it's a difficult process.
Takes a long time. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I recognize the math involved and this will be an incredible increase that will require additional staff in several departments, as you mentioned. But it will be revenue neutral because of the anticipation. This is not a moneymaker for the city of Albany. And the moneymaking coming in and going out would not be necessary if people would obey the speed limit. Just, I do, it's not that hard.
But doesn't yellow mean go?
Yes. You read Mad Magazine, too. Never mind.
Well, that's a legitimate question. And I anticipated that any additional revenue that would come in, and we don't anticipate it to be much, would go towards public safety and public works improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGee, do you have anything?
Thank you very much. I think it's a great idea personally. I've seen too many people speeding through town. One of my red herrings is people driving during this time of year with no headlights on. And this car literally ran, almost ran into me. Didn't see him. It was a silver car in the morning with fog. And he just came out of nowhere. And it's quite dangerous. And so I hope these red light cameras will catch people speeding through the intersections. Because the light is not, if it's pink, it's red, as far as I'm concerned. So I wish you luck, but just I hope that this passes.
Counselor Novak, do you have anything? So I have a resolution on page five, counsel.
I move we approve the resolution on page five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Five to nothing. Thank you very much, chief, for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for putting me at the front of the agenda.
Next on tonight's agenda is parliamentary procedure training by City Clerk Alson Leish.
Can I just say thank you in advance?
Yes.
We need this.
Did I do it? I don't think I turned it on. There we go.
There we go.
All right. I turned it on. Thank you. Okay. Yes, yes, and I need my prop. Kinsey made me props. So I want, I want to talk to you from up here. I don't want to sit down there and be the clerk. And I really don't want to sit down here and be giving testimony. So you have to listen. And the audience doesn't really care that much about this. They just need to know that I'm not whispering secrets to you or anything. We listed it in the agenda as training. You guys don't need training. I don't need training. We need a little review. We all know how to pass an ordinance. Just sometimes we get mixed up when it's kind of in the middle of a meeting and we've got process and we've got some strategy going on. And we take breaks so we can go to the bathroom. We sort of lose our place. So this is maybe a review and a reminder and some thoughts about why we actually do it this way. So maybe it'll make a little more sense. Our ordinance, am I doing okay? No, I'm not gonna. Okay. All right, I'll hold the microphone. Okay, that's fine. I'll hold all my stuff and we'll try this. So this is just a reminder why we do things this way. Our ordinance process comes from the charter, which is in section 37. An ordinance before being adopted shall be read in open council meeting in title only and may then be read a second time in title only and adopted at a single meeting of the council by a unanimous vote of all councilors present. That's where this all comes from. So, okay, imagine we're meeting a century and a half ago, about the time our city was chartered, maybe a little after that. Wagons have only recently stopped coming over the Oregon Trail. We have no internet. We have no telephone. We have no TV news, no radio news, and probably no daily local newspaper. We notice our meetings by posting a paper agenda at City Hall and at the courthouse and maybe at a prominent local business or two. Oh. And we're all male. Not that that is really, it really makes a difference, but I really wanted the prop. It's cute. Yes, historically accurate. Okay, so the first reading of the title of the ordinance in a meeting is a kind of public notice of what's being proposed. Community members in the meeting now know what kind of decision the councilors are considering. And the councilors have a chance to decide individually whether they want to take action on the issue. Okay, so I don't think we should address this right now. Who else is likely to agree? I know Counselor Jones is on my side of the issue. If I vote against a second reading, that will give me two weeks to see if I can swing some others in. So the motion and a vote for a second reading is where the council states their willingness to act on the ordinance tonight. All right. The mustache is implied from now on. So yeah, this is fine. It's simple, it's necessary, and my constituents won't have strong feelings about it. Let's just get it done. I move to have the ordinance read a second time in title only. If no counselor votes against reading the ordinance a second time in title only, the reading takes place. This is kind of like the auctioneer hollering, going twice. The audience and the council are reminded of the action being proposed, and it's confirmed that no counselor objects to acting immediately. If even one counselor votes against the second reading, it's pushed out to the next meeting. Both the council and the community now have time to consider the proposed action and organize arguments and support. So before the next meeting, I need to get out in my ward and find out what people think, maybe write a letter to the editor. There's all that that is going to go on. Okay, once the ordinance has been read a second time, the ordinance itself is on the table for consideration. This is when the council can talk about the ordinance as action. When the council is ready to take action, the motion is, I move to adopt the ordinance. When you move to adopt an ordinance, this is something that's been kind of gathering momentum here. It really isn't necessary to read the title of the ordinance. For situations when we need to have certain language in a motion, you'll have a suggested motion from probably planning. They're about the ones who need to do that. If you don't have a suggested motion in front of you, you only need to say, I move to adopt the ordinance. There's no need to go into trying to read all those heavy capital letters and make it all come out in one breath. Okay? That's kind of what I wanted to leave you with, just a quick. We've got six ordinances coming up. Now we remember kind of why we have to do it this way. And we can maybe just make it slip right through.
Did you say, so the reading, the second reading automatically happens at the next meeting? Is that correct?
If there's, yes, if there's.
The next regular meeting or work meeting?
Regular meeting.
It's, yeah, I don't think the charter specifies that, but we, this is, a regular meeting is when we take action. So that's what we assume.
So we wait till the, okay, thank you.
It gives you a chance to go out and lobby, talk to folks, kind of get feedback from the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, back to your regularly scheduled programming.
Number seven on the agenda tonight is. We're in at there's seven or how many agendas on? How many are there? There's six ordinances under consideration tonight. Albany Municipal Code, housekeeping. Christian Delzy here going to talk to us or we're just going to go ahead and go forward? We talked about it Monday, so we're good to go? Okay. Item A, Albany Municipal Code, housekeeping. Item one is AMC, Chapter 5.06.140, forms and conditions for mobile food units, MFUs, permit and property MFU authorization. The ordinance is on page eight of your packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, AMC, Chapter 5.06.140, forms and conditions for mobile food unit, MFU, permit and property MFU authorization.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
I move we read the second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, AMC, Chapter 5.06.140, forms and conditions for mobile food unit, MFU, permit and property MFU authorization.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
There's a second, motion and a second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, motion, the ordinance passes. Second, AMC, Chapter 6.10. You need something? Okay. Dot 1.0 violation and penalty. Ordinance is on page nine of your packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 6.10.080, violation penalty.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I move we read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 6.10.080, violation penalty.
Is there any discussion about the ordinance? If not, would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion, ordinance passes. Item number three, AMC, Chapter 6.18.010, definitions on page 10 of your packet. Would the city council please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 6.18.010, definitions.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you, counselors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance a second time in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 6.18.010, definitions.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Item four on the agenda would be the section of the agenda, AMC, Chapter 8.01.020, debris, garbage and junk, page 11 of your packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 8.01.020, debris, garbage and junk.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance a second time in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 8.01.020, debris, garbage and junk.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five, AMC, Chapter 13.36.180, motor vehicle and recreational vehicle use for sleeping and housekeeping purposes and for housekeeping purposes and related parking restrictions, page 13 of your packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, AMC, Chapter 13.36.180, motor vehicle or recreational vehicle use for sleeping or housekeeping purposes and related parking restrictions.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
Move to read a second time in title only.
Is there, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, AMC, Chapter 13.36.180, motor vehicle or recreational vehicle use for sleeping or housekeeping purposes and related parking restrictions.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, counselors. Item number six, AMC, Chapter 13.90.110, regulations. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 13.90.110, regulations.
Would the council like to make a motion to read a motion a second time? Assume the ordinance is second time in title only?
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance for a second time in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Section 13.90.110, regulations.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you, counselors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next, item eight on the agenda is adoption of resolutions. Adopt, item A is adopt private property impound towing rates. Code compliance, Officer Shindel. We talked about this on Monday. The resolution is on page 15 of your packet.
We didn't.
We didn't talk about this? Oh, it's coming up now? Okay.[1721.37]
Yeah.
Good evening councillors. So this came of just my general review. I reached out to the tow companies as we began to get more and more in the city wanting to perform the service, which is a vital service. You know, we have a lot of private property owners that need to deal with cars and if we put too many roadblocks in there, then it creates issues. So tow truck companies aren't going to provide the service if they aren't at least breaking even. Obviously, it's a profit margin that they need, so when they reached out, I asked for feedback from all of them and then came up with this to be more in line with today's rates after inflation. The original one, I believe, was passed in 2017, so it's quite old. So this is just bringing up today's standard. One thing that was pointed out to me in exhibit A was that the dash on the four looks, doesn't really show anything, so it kind of looks like 74, but the fours crossed out, each things are going up $3, not $70. So just to clarify that. Other than that, I'm free for any questions.
Also, we have any questions for Officer Shindel? I had, I just have one question regarding the contract with the city. How was that determined? And when, is it open, is it periodically open for competition?
You're talking about the tow contract directly for the city? I'm not involved in that process, but it is a, you know, open bid process for that, yeah. This is, this has nothing to do with that process, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll talk about it later, Peter. Okay, council, we have a resolution on page 15.
So.
Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution on.
We need to read it first.
It's not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance.
It's a resolution.
Jeez. Got me all messed up.
Let's, let me try that again.
Sorry about that.
Move to adopt a resolution, adopting private property impound towing rates and repealing resolution number 6569.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, motion passes. Next is create system development charge policy. Rob Emmons, Emmens? Did I say it right? Page 19 of your packet.
You said it correctly, Mayor. Right, thank you Mayor Johnson and council. So tonight's, this agenda item and this resolution is a resolution that establishes an SDC policy specifically for commercial properties that redevelop into residential properties. And it's kind of a unique resolution because most resolutions tend to change something or new policy or establish a fee. And this resolution really just maintains what the city is currently doing with SDCs. It's not changing anything. Let me explain that a little bit. I explained it in the memo and the resolution kind of steps through that process, but but just a little bit of history. So House Bill 2984 was passed by the Oregon Legislature this summer. Was adopted in July and takes effect January 1st. And there are two, two issues or two main provisions in that House bill. The first is, this House bill allows commercial properties to redevelop into residential properties, kind of specifically targeting affordable housing, residential development. And they, this bill allows that those properties to do that without a zoning change or without a any kind of a conditional use permits or special permits. That's well and good. Community Development Department doesn't have any issues with that. So that's good. That's not really the issue today. The issue is really on the second provision in that House bill. The second provision in that bill states that properties that convert from commercial to residential can only be charged wastewater and water SDCs and cannot be charged parks, transportation or storm drainage SDCs. Unless, unless the city adopts a policy, adopts a policy stating otherwise. And so that's, that's what this resolution does. It basically, it basically establishes via policy our current way of charging SDCs. So it's not changing anything. It's just stating that we're going to charge SDCs the way we've always charged SDCs. And that's keeping in line with the language in the, in the House bill. And that's it. I hope I made that clear, but I can answer any questions if council has any.
Council, do you have any questions? So we have a resolution on page 19 of your packet.
I move we approve a resolution adopting a system development charge policy for conversion of buildings from commercial to residential use in non-industrial zones.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, Rob. I appreciate your time this evening. Next on tonight's agenda is approval of contracts. Item A, award contract for city property mowing services. Rick Barnett, is he here tonight?
Yes, I'm, I'm on the video. Just want to, want to answer any questions you might have about awarding the city mowing contract and ask you to accept or approve the contract.
Also, any questions for Rob? Or Rick?
I have a question. It says that two, two bids were received, so it was another company along with Chorak Mowing or Chorak submitted two bids? I'm not entirely clear on that.
No, there, there was another company, the bids were vastly different. Chorak Mowings was very similar to where we've been and the other one was, was substantially more.
Thank you.
Any other councillor, questions councillors?
I move we approve a resolution accepting the bid and awarding a contract to Michael Chorak, Chorak Mowing and authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to enter into a contract with Mike Chorak, Chorak Mowing for city property mowing services.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
The resolution passes. Next, item 10 on the agenda, revised intergovernmental agreements with the City of Millsburg, Director Bailey. Nina Preston will be here tonight for her. Did not get the memo changed.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight we have updated intergovernmental agreements with the City of Millersburg. And we have several agreements with the city to provide them water, sewer and other utility services. But tonight we're talking about the drinking water agreements. And there are two of them and they were last revised in 2016. And we've been working with Millersburg staff on the needed changes. So the first one is for the operation and maintenance of the jointly owned water facilities. And those facilities include our raw water intake and pumps, the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant, known as the AM plant. There are large reservoir that we share in the main line from the plant that delivers the water to our systems. And so this IGA generally describes our water rights, ownership share of facilities, responsibilities and how we bill for service. So the main changes in this agreement, first, we added language on insurance coverage, responsibilities since they're jointly owned facilities by two parties. Our insurance provider recommended we spell it out who is responsible. The second change, or significant change is we added language to clarifying our billing process to include specific charges for the Albany Water Admin Budget. So it's proportionally charged to Millersburg, which they weren't previously billed. But the major update was to address the benefit for the operation of Albany's other water treatment plant, which is the Vine Street Plant that Millersburg does not jointly own. So when we, it's to acknowledge that when we run the Vine plant, it benefits the whole system so that the AM plant has to run less. So we've run both plants together as one system and our staff moved between the two. And we manage water through our systems regardless of which plant generates the water. This is different than what was envisioned when the IGAs were first drafted. We thought that Vine would only run occasionally during peak demand times. But in reality, we need to run Vine more routinely. It's just a more effective way to, or efficient way to run the plant. So now we're billing Millersburg that will now account for an equitable portion of the operation of the Vine plant for a routine water supply during emergencies and to acknowledge the benefit of having a second water treatment plant and water source for the Millersburg customers. So the budget impacts are kind of difficult to quantify since it depends on many factors by, like water usage, the production costs. But if we use the first quarter of water production as an example, it would result in estimated an additional $50,000 in water revenue for Albany for that quarter. So that's the first agreement. The second agreement we're updating is the Water Distribution System Maintenance Service, IGA. And this describes the maintenance services that Albany provides to Millersburg, who own their own water distribution system that delivers water to their customers. And Albany staff perform most of the maintenance work on their system. And the primary changes for this are, will be that Albany staff will serve as the Direct Responsible Charge, or DRC, for the Millersburg Distribution System. Every public water system is required to have a designated responsible charge that holds the required certification from the state and it's responsible for oversight of the system and the proper operation. And Millersburg has been contracting this DRC service to a consultant for the past several years and that contract is ending at the end of this year and won't be extended. So Albany already performs most of the work required by the DRC and so we're willing to take on this added responsibility. This is described in the revised IGA and includes an additional monthly fee of $500 per month for this service. So both of these IGAs are for another 10 years unless we have other changes we want to make along the way. And I just wanted to note, there's an error on the signature pages of them. Thank you councillor Smith for your eagle eye to update the city clerk from Mary to Allison. But if you agree with the substance of these changes, we'll correct that before we route it for signatures. And lastly, I wanted to mention that Millersburg staff brought this to their council last night and they voted to approve the adoption of these agreements. So I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you so much, Kristin. Any councillors have a question?
I really appreciate the time you guys took in updating this and that it's now updated to accommodate or to account for the benefit that they receive for the Vine plant. I think that's a great thing to put in there, so thank you.
I agree, thank you.
I personally like the relationship that our cities have with each other. I mean, a lot of good cooperative work going on, collaborative work, and I appreciate that and how the staffs get together and work. So I, I commend you for the work put into this project.
Thank you.
Okay, council. Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the attached revised intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreements with the City of Millsburg for the jointly owned water facilities and the maintenance of the Millersburg Water Distribution System.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's, tonight's agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Council?
I move we, I'm sorry, I move we adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much, motion passes. Next on tonight's agenda, I will, I started last time with councillor Novak. I'll start with councillor McGee this time.
Who's still out?
Yay. Councillor Kopczynski.
Hi ho, since this is our last meeting of the year, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, any other holiday that you might wish to mention, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you very much councillor. Councillor Smith, you're next up.
I saw the leaf pickup truck working today, yay. They've got two days to go, so get your leaves out there. If they haven't been picked up by the end of the week, they're your responsibility until next fall. That, I think, is the only thing I had to, oh, wanted to mention also that as partially a direct result of the mayor inviting the folks from Furniture Share to come tell us about their organization some months ago, they received a chair from the Smith household yesterday. Replaced by my Christmas present.
Nice.
And that's, I'm looking forward to serving at the holiday meal at the Riverfront Community Center tomorrow. I missed that during COVID and looking forward, that is such a great time. A good time to see fellow employees and councillors and, and just the folks who come to eat and it's really good food.
Thank you very much. Is that it?
That's it.
Councillor Montague?
Yeah, I would like to invite the public to participate in our citizen advisory groups. I have a couple vacancies on our Transportation Commission and then also the Human Relations Commission. I specifically want to highlight the importance of these, of the citizen advisory groups. I think it's important for, for me as a councillor, I, I want to hear from the citizens on, on what's important and a lot of these groups, they know more about that subject than I do. So, and as we continue our conversation about streets and street funding, I think it's really important that we have a full Transportation Advisory Group because those voices are going to become very important very soon. So if you are interested, please go to the albanyoregon.gov, which is our new website. Our same website, different address. And under your government, you can see citizen advisory groups and at the bottom you can apply. You can learn about these citizen advisory groups there. There's a lot of information. Please go there and apply if you are interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Novak?
Yeah, I just want to thank councillor Montague for highlighting the fact that we do need people to serve on the citizen advisory groups. And I also want to mention that I was so excited to talk about my first ever Christmas parlor tour. I mentioned that at the Business of the Council on Monday, that I completely spaced on wishing our Director of the Albany Downtown Association a happy birthday. Director Kellum would normally burst into song. I'm going to spare our Director of the Downtown Association any sort of bursting into song this year, but I can't pass on letting you all know that it was her birthday on Monday, the 11th. And so happy birthday to you, Director Lisa Grotto. We appreciate you immensely. Hope you have a blessed year.
Yeah, I reached out, I saw it on Facebook after the meeting.
Well, I'm glad you did because I meant to mention it and I forgot.
So for me, this is the last city council meeting of the year and I do apologize. I typically have a big statement to read. But all of you know that my industry has been turned on its head and so I've been in the books working nonstop since October 1st outside of some meetings. But I know we had a great year this year. We started out with our great celebration for New Years. Then the Oregon Mayors Association If I Were Mayor contest. We had two wonderful winners of that contest. Noah Salazar won first in state for the 4th and 5th graders. He did a great presentation over at the Oregon Mayors Conference and Jacella Williams was second place in state for West Albany High School. Housing construction is happening all over the state so well that our governor came and spent some time with us to kind of figure out, can see what we're doing in Albany, so we're blessed with that. Our waterfront project is happening, it is progressing and people are excited throughout the town. I think it's going to be a blessing for us long term. It's not for me, it's for those kids that we visit in school. Those kids that are going to go away to, go away and go to school or go to military, take a job somewhere else and come back and bring their children to town and say, the mayor came to our class, city council came to our class and said, this is for your future, for the prosperity of the City of Albany, Oregon. I'm excited about that. New businesses are coming to town. There's business construction happening all over the place. I think it's wonderful. I want to commend giving a hoot, Crystal Duffer and Bobby Williams for the work that they've done in beautifying the city, getting volunteers out, myself has done it, city manager's done it, councillor Smith has done it. So it is something that all cities should do, but I know that we have people that are driving that change and it's wonderful. Oh, the Veterans Parade again was a success. I cannot tell you how proud I am as the mayor for other mayors. I saw 11 other mayors at our city council meeting, our Veterans Parade. So that's pretty awesome. And then the Twice Around Downtown Parade was fantastic. I was cold, it was fantastic. I swear, I don't even know what the heck that says, it's my handwriting. I'll skip that. Oh, Happy New Year to everyone, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah. But I want to thank our public servants that are always on call. I talk about this all the time with other mayors. There's a thing that a doctor told me about years ago called allostatic load and it's how stress interacts physiologically with your bodies. And our public servants are always on call. always on call. And so for them, and from my family to them, I sincerely appreciate all that you do on behalf of keeping this city safe, and I want you always to know that as a son of a retired police officer, your work, the work the fire department does, the EMS, all the work that you do on behalf of this city will always be greatly appreciated by me and this council. And I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing to note, that tomorrow evening is the lighting of a menorah on the plaza. So I'd like to join you and everybody else in wishing each of you, well, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. So maybe you can read your statement at the first meeting of the new year. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thanks, Peter.
Yes. Oh.
I joined a little early.
Thank you, Councilor Newton. So next on tonight's agenda is the city council will now meet in executive session to discuss litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192.6, subsection 8.2, subsection H, and labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.660, subsection 2, paragraph 2, subsection D. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room and crap... Oh, just a minute. Okay. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are especially, specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive session. I now recess to executive session at 7:27 PM.
So Sophie, are you going to come up and ask for some direction or what are you going to do? Thank you.
I think Sean.
Sean?
Yes.
What do you need from us?
We will need a motion from the council. If somebody would make a motion up there.
Councilor Smith is going to make the motion.
Councilor Smith, okay. I move to approve the amended standard terms and conditions language for all city contracts. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. The motion passes. Director?
Council, I am hoping for action as outlined.
I move to ratify the new classifications and related compensation changes within the public works operation, park maintenance and building maintenance divisions as outlined by the city's human resource director and covered under the city's tentative agreement with the AFSCME union.
I have a motion in two seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Your motion passes. The great work director, great work person, Director Kristen, thank you very much. With that, the next meeting dates are... I thought we had a work session coming up. Oh, so wow. Okay, next meeting will be next year. January 8th, I have the January at 4:00 PM work session and Wednesday, January 10th at 2024 at 6:00 PM. And with that, good night and hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah and Happy